Welcome to Perspectives Online and of course on air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Plantagen. This program using the ubiquitous Zoom platform was pre-recorded on Tuesday, September 22 for playback on Thursday, September 24 and the show will appear on both WFSU FM and the WFSU Public Media Facebook page. Now this program is the second in our series of political perspectives in the run-up to the November 3 general election. We'll be talking with candidates vying for several offices in the course of the next week and a half. That includes two Leon County Commission contests, one Tallahassee City Commission race, and also a local referendum on a proposed Children's Council for Leon County. And I bet you we're gonna wade into that particular topic in the course of this particular program too. Today's political perspectives features the three candidates for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at Large, seat one. Now this seat opened up when the current occupant, Mary Ann Lindley, decided not to seek another term. And out of a very large initial field, and I mean a total field because we had the screen covered with candidates at that point going into the August primary, we are now down to the two largest vote-getters in that election, Carolyn Cummings and Kelly Adi plus a write-in candidate, Melissa Villar. And we're gonna start off with giving each candidate a few moments, excuse me, to introduce themselves. They're also gonna talk about their background and will be telling us what they consider to be the unique qualities that make each of them the preferred person to do the job. After that, we'll get into some specific issues pertinent to Leon County government. And although we don't follow the strict time limits on statements as so many of these forums and debates do, I'll kinda jump in if any response goes on for more than say a couple, three minutes. So we can talk about more topics in the course of the program. So please, we'll ask the folks to keep their comments brief and on-point. And that includes me. In advance of the program, we did hold a drawing just to see who'll start off, and then we'll mix it up as we go. The name that came up first was Carolyn Cummings. So Ms. Cummings, welcome back. It is so good to see you. And if you could give us again, a little introduction about yourself and what you consider the top qualities that would qualify you for the office of Leon County Commission?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Plantagen. And I appreciate WFSU and you all allowing me the opportunity to speak about my candidacy. I am Carolyn Cummings, as you said. I'm a candidate for Leon County Commission at Large, seat three. I have been a resident and a practicing attorney in Leon County for over 37 years. I've worked in the public sector. I've worked in the private sector, purchased property as part of the Fresh Town Revitalization Movement. And my law firm is located here in Fresh Town. It has been here for about 20, over 20 years. I believe I have my ears to the pulse of the individuals in Leon County. I have volunteered my legal services to many segments of the community and organizations that advocate for youth and for seniors and just for all citizens in the county. I have been recognized by the Florida Supreme Court for all of the free legal services that I have provided over the years to citizens in Leon County. I believe that I am the best person for the job because I know how to think outside of the box. I am a business owner. I know what it is to make payroll. I am a mother. I represent clients who, for the most part, don't have a lot of money. They're not wealthy, but I've had to find ways to advocate for them successfully. I will take that same advocacy to the Leon County Commission and advocate for all citizens of Leon County. I am concerned about jump-starting our economy. I'm concerned about affordable housing, affordable healthcare, equitable wages, and also lowering the crime rate and social justice and equality. Affordable housing, healthcare, equitable wages is what we want to do to make Leon County a valuable place to live for everybody. Addressing the crime rate is about making sure we are maintaining law and order in our county and in our streets. And of course, addressing social justice or criminal justice reform is just simply about fairness for everybody. And especially since we've had a study here in Leon County where most of the citizens, majority of the citizens, believe we need to look at equity and we need to look at the inequities and we need to be concerned about equal justice for all. So I believe this is the time and place where we need to tackle those issues. I am the individual that we need at the table to make sure our economy is jump-started in the face of COVID-19. And I believe we have to marriage business and industry and make sure that the concerns of the community as far as the environment, our natural resources are holistically addressed. We can all work together to make sure we jump-start the economy. And I'm the person to be at the table to do that, Mr. Plantagen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Carolyn Cummings. Next, we have a self-introduction and qualifications overview from Kelly Adi. Go ahead, ma'am. Better take off mute there, Kelly.
Of course, it was gonna be me. Thank you so much for having us on the show, Tom. It's really a pleasure to be here. I'm running for the Leon County Commission at Large, seat one position because I love Leon County. I've been incredibly lucky to have raised two children in this beautiful community. And I saw all of the possibilities that were available to them. I've also spent the last 25 years working in the community and the nonprofit sector predominantly. And I've experienced the fact that that is not the same circumstances for a lot of people in this community. The people that I've been working with for the last 25 years are people who are scared every single day whether or not they're gonna have a safe place to sleep tonight, and also whether or not they're gonna have food for their children. And so I'm running for them. I'm running because my father couldn't access affordable quality care here in Leon County when he got sick three years ago. And he died while we were trying to find an economical assisted living facility for him. So I'm running for people like my father who cannot afford to access affordable assisted living. I'm running because I know that the people of Leon County have the solutions to these problems and many other problems. The thing that I believe that I am good at and that I've been doing for 25 years here is pulling people together to work collaboratively and to look at big issues and try to come up with big solutions. And so some of the things I've been able to accomplish, working in groups and leading groups to get that done, are things like creating the first forensic sexual assault nurse examiner program here in Leon County. I expanded the domestic violence center here from a three-bedroom house to an 11,000-square-foot facility and was able to add a childcare, quality childcare center to that. I worked with then Commissioner Kenoch and Yemi to create the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I also participated in starting the United Partners for Human Services, which was the very first association for human service organizations in the community, and was part of starting the Institute on Nonprofit Innovation and Excellence, which is the very first management support organization for the nonprofit sector. I have 25 years of working directly with the people in this county from every walk of life, either collaboratively because we've been doing the work that needed to get done, or working in neighborhoods to find out what they needed and how we could help do it. In addition to my nonprofit experience, I worked in commercial real estate. I've worked with the Bureau of Land Management, which is the federal government. And I've also worked for Chris Craft Boats, which is an international manufacturing company. I think even people have butted heads with me will tell you that the thing about me is that I am not afraid to speak the truth, and I'm not afraid to ask hard questions. And I'd like to do that as your next Leon County Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly Adi. Now Carolyn and Kelly have both been on this program in the pre-primary political perspectives. We welcome a new face and voice to the discussion though, because she is the write-in candidate for this particular office in the Leon County Commission, and that is Melissa Villar. And Melissa, go ahead. Tell us a bit about yourself by way of background and also what you consider to be some of your prime qualifications for the job.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, WFSU Public Media, Tom and Kimberly, for holding the forum today. First, I do want to give my condolences to our families that have lost lives due to COVID public health disaster and to violence, to crime in Leon County and the United States and the globe. You know, I want to give my sincere condolences to all of families that have lost lives, first and foremost. And I do also, so my background, I am originally from Texas, and I moved to Tallahassee in 2000, early 2000s. And I worked for a Fortune 500 telecommunications firm, which enabled me with a livable wage to relocate my family to Tallahassee because I have family here. And I, while working full-time, you know, I was an independent distributor for Scholastic contracting, you know, having book sales with Child Development Centers, with Department of Juvenile Justice, and to, you know, our various childcare centers in the region and Panhandle in South Georgia. So I am familiar with communities. I am familiar with the people. And, you know, because I, and I also worked for the Leon County School System at Gretchen Everhart with special needs children. And, you know, because of the inability to provide for my children with one stable job and health insurance, I began working for the Florida House of Representatives a few years after I moved here. And so with that, I earned working full-time, being a full-time mother, obviously, raising children. So my kudos to families that are doing virtual school because I would come home and, you know, studying. I went back to higher education, earned my Bachelor from Embry-Riddle in Aeronautics and Security and Intelligence, and my Master of Public Administration from the Askew School of Public Administration and Policy, and also focused on emergency management. So in 2015, I resigned from the Florida House of Representatives because of my values, of what I represented and as Ruth Gator Ginsburg, you know, leadership, if you, others will join. So that is what I did. I resigned and I formed the, because I felt that communities were being underrepresented. So I formed the holistic cannabis community in normal Tallahassee. And my philosophy is equal access, equal justice. So in four short years, because of our perseverance, because of the inequities that exist in Florida based on medical marijuana and the inequities in cannabis and the pay-to-play scheme, if you could not afford the, we are the top three most expensive patient to patient access medical marijuana, one of three most expensive for patient and business entrants. So if you could not afford to be a patient, then if you were arrested, if you didn't have a medical marijuana ID card, then you would be subject to arrest. And I had, you know, young individual, you know, driving and being followed and being stopped in their own driveway with one marijuana joint for their mother because they had cancer. So these are the types of issues that I fight for. I fight for equity. I fight for our hemp programs. So in four short years, we were able to lower crime in the state of, in Leon County by 32%. That was through our perseverance, through our evidence-based, everything I do is evidence-based. And so with, by our perseverance, we were able to halt the arrests and prosecutions for cannabis possession. We were able to bring equity to the cannabis industry by having a free hemp cultivation permit fee. So I do represent the 75% of Leon County voters who voted in favor of medical marijuana. And it doesn't represent the number of patients that we have in Leon County. And 72% of Floridians voted in favor of medical marijuana. So right now, you know, I do represent the people, not, you know, unfortunately, there are organizations that are collaborated with in Leon County that are against our voters. And it's important to understand that. And that is what I bring to the table. I speak the truth. When we're at forums for medical marijuana, it's like, okay, I understand that, you know, educational institutions are concerned for their students and for, but they need to know the truth. They need to understand what the subject matters are. And hemp is no longer a controlled substance. The more act would de-schedule marijuana, which was up for a vote. We should have a vote coming up this month or in the next few months, which would de-schedule marijuana, which also, you know, I have, my neighbor is a firefighter and EMS technicians. And, you know, we are really, it would expand. It would end the strategy to divide. Because what we have is a 1970s Controlled Substances Act, which was, which the, you know, the Schaefer Commission recommended against scheduling marijuana. And the Nixon administration, Richard Nixon, who was the only president to resign, was against that. And the strategy, the Southern strategy to divide our nation prevailed. And it does today. So by a president that resigned. So these are, these are the issues that I focus on. And it's not only that, but the environmental issues, it's our emergency management issues, it's our affordable housing, because we do have affiliates that are working on tiny hemp houses in Panama City. We focus on Earn to Learn programs with our Community Carpentry USA. So there are many, many aspects. I'm quite diverse. And I'm focused on inclusion. So thank you.
Very good. We'll get into some more of those in just a little bit. But one thing that I think everyone had mentioned in the course of these introductory comments was, or at least had referenced it, was the ongoing income disparity and the stratification economically within this community, which so many news sources and public policy experts have referenced just in the past five years, something that seems to now be increasing in the wake of the COVID crisis, which has caused an increase in unemployment and a further gap between the haves and the have-nots in the community. So again, very, very quickly, folks, if we could get a couple minutes from each of you on what you would do specifically, especially in the realm of jobs, which would reduce such things as youthful crime, other problems within the community, let's focus on that. And we'll kind of reverse the order here, starting with you, Ms. Villar. What would you do about jobs, particularly in the parts of the community and in communities of color where those jobs are really hard to find right now?
Absolutely. You know, it is about opportunity. One of the things that our team also is focused on is, you know, working with the Leon County Schools to actually have trade, you know, shop programs available again in high schools. You know, that is something. And with the Earn to Learn programs, because, you know, with the nonprofits, we need to be able to have a revenue stream for our young people, which is not fixed on the illicit market. You know, there is a huge wealth disparity problem. There is a huge human trafficking escort issue in this town, which is unfortunately used by our elected officials that come to Tallahassee at the Capitol. So unfortunately, this is happening in our town. And I have provided much information and to combat against the abuses that are using, our sexual exploitation of our youth. So the huge wealth disparities in our, in our town impact, negatively impact the option. So we need to have, we need to have shop programs. We need to have Earn to Learn programs. And it's important to understand, you know, you've got, you have the Florida Chamber of Commerce, which is opposed, has the Supreme Court briefs. They are, they are opposed to the legalization of marijuana. You know, there are trade federations who are, and you can look at the amicus, you can look at the briefs through the Florida Supreme Court, Make It Legal Florida, and Regulate Marijuana Like Alcohol, Sensible Florida, which they are opposed. And these are, so they are opposed to the majority of our voters. So when we are collaborating and discussing about business opportunities, and I don't believe when you have, I don't believe the chamber, and that's why we have so many different sections and so many different factions, and because they did not represent the majority of the community, it left out, it was not diversified. So that's why you have so many various offshoots now. So it's really important. And education, you know, hemp professional and technical resource centers, we need technical resource centers because it's not about, you know, I have formed these organizations and we have been 100% volunteer-based. So, you know, to be able to offer an opportunity, which is, it's, these are the beginnings. This is just the beginning. And I feel like I am the person to lead in the 21st century, to lead Leon County in the 21st century, that is also concerned about our natural resources. So when we are, you know, development, everything that we're doing for job creation has to be sustainable, environmentally friendly, and, you know, for our future generations. Thank you.
Very good. Kelly Adi, your thoughts again on income disparity, job creation, economic development, those things?
So I really believe the way that we're gonna address poverty is really through collective impact. One of the things that's pretty apparent to me is that the way we're approaching poverty is what, through what I call popcorn policy, means that something pops up over here and it's a good idea and we, and we're trying to do it, or a pop's up over there and we try to do it. What we do not have is a blueprint for economic segregation. And what I'd like to see is a strategic plan on how, over the next 20 years, we could make a meaningful difference with the almost 50% of Leon County residents who can't afford to live in this community. And so there are a couple of different ways that I'd like to see us talking about that. One is that we really have, we're focused on bringing in jobs to the community, but we have to be careful about that. We have to bring in jobs that play, pay a living wage so that we can actually afford to pay people a wage that will bring them out of poverty and allow them to support their families. I believe that we need to increase the minimum pay across the board to $15 an hour. I'm supportive of the way they're graduating it in through the constitutional amendment. I do recognize that it's gonna be a hard lift for some businesses. I did it in the last organization that I worked for, and it definitely impacts your bottom line. But it's necessary because otherwise, I'm not sure that businesses understand that when you're underpaying people, you're helping with your bottom line, but you're forcing people to live in circumstances where they can't afford to feed their families in an appropriate way. And I don't believe people really want to do that. I think we need to support more Black and women-owned startup businesses. I'd like to see a lot of emphasis on growing talent here. I understand that there are specific areas of expertise where we need to go outside of the county and recruit people, or to try to keep them so they don't leave our universities. I 100% understand that. But I also think we need to spend a lot of time and attention on actually growing local citizens into opening the kind of businesses that we need in the community. I really want to see the county contracting with locally-owned businesses for everything unless there's an extraordinary reason that they can, meaning that it is just a service, that there is nobody in Leon County that can provide. One of the examples somebody gave me was there are development, there's development opportunities that the companies here are not big enough to be able to handle. Then I think we ought to grow them in to be able to handle it so that locally-owned businesses are actually doing our locally-owned work and that the money is staying here. My values in looking at economic segregation are, I grew up poor. I was, my dad was a self-employed plumber. My mother was a stay-at-home mom until I was in middle school for a period. When I was in middle school, we were homeless and lived in, actually lived in a field with a converted mobile home RV for a summer. So I know that that didn't have any impact on how I was loved. It had no impact on whether or not I had food and whether I was well taken care of. So I think the other thing we need to do is educate the part of the community that is the haves, that the have-nots are hurting and that they're not okay with their situation. And so we have to do something to help them, help their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Cummings, we'll wind up with you there. What would you do to address some of those issues where there are folks who have a lot and some folks who don't have much and a big gap in between?
Thank you, Mr. Plantagen. I think clearly there is income disparity here in Leon County. And I think perhaps we might need to take a two-pronged approach to that. We have businesses that are established here. We have women and minority-owned businesses, and then we have majority-owned businesses as well. And it's interesting that at two-part in a forum this weekend, that was put on by two chambers, the Big Ben Minority Chamber and the Capital City Chamber. Their people were in attendance, and we talked about this very issue. And the first thing I believe that we need to do to jump-start the economy and try to deal with that income divide is bring the industries together, bring the businesses together. And as Leon County or city government, we can incentivize our major businesses to include small and minority businesses in their proposals, in their response to requests for proposals. We have to provide a reason to include small and minority-owned businesses in the procurement process. One of the things that the forum this weekend also did is they brought the chief procurement officer from Atlanta to speak to the group. And he talked about how the development of, we know that major airport, the business airport world in Atlanta, how the procurement process was able to invest, it was, as a result, created millionaires in Atlanta who were minority-owned, women-owned businesses. So I think it's going to take us incentivizing the inclusion of all businesses, especially for work that is bid by our government, by our city and our county. And then we have to follow that and make sure that that process works. We have to make sure that the majority and the minority developers are working together to make it happen. And that is the first step. And I think that's something that we can do immediately. And that would help jump-start the economy. But second, I believe we need to educate our citizenry. We need to educate our workforce. Everybody is not designed, nor does everybody want to attend college. But there is something for everybody to do. Everybody can contribute to the society. And that, that's what makes communities and cities rich. It's interesting that I was talking to Mr. Rudy Rowe, who is the owner of Rowe Roofing the other day, and he has some great ideas. And I think what we have to do is the government is bring all parties together. We have business owners that have great ideas about how to jump-start this economy. And one of the things we talked about was education, strengthening the vocational technical schools that we have here locally, or maybe even creating vocational technical colleges that will attract individuals from all over the southern, the southern part of Alabama, Georgia, and here in Florida, and educate our people to these various professions so that they can make livable wage, take care of their families, they can have affordable healthcare, they can purchase housing, and all of that collectively will bolster the economy, will increase the tax rate, the tax base, and it will make our county a better place to live. So I think we have that two- So I think we have that two-pronged approach to addressing that problem.
Thank you, Carolyn Cummings. The three candidates for Leon County Board of County Commissioners, the at-large seat being vacated by Mary Ann Lindley, who decided not to seek another term. We have Carolyn Cummings, Kelly Adi, and Melissa Villar here with us on Political Perspectives from WFSU Public Media. Some dates to keep in mind for the upcoming general election in Leon County. Vote-by-mail ballots being shipped out by Mark Early. I think he's going to carry them all in the back of his SUV to the post office himself. That's what I heard. Coming out September 24th, the mailings begin there to the voters who have requested mail-in ballots. The deadline for voter registration, October 5th. Early voting starting on October 19th. Early voting locations, of course, posted on the Supervisor of Elections website. And then the general election day is Tuesday, November 3rd. Not only will you folks be facing balloting on that day, but there is also a referendum here in Leon County for the Children's Council. And if we can go around the screen real quick and find out from each of you whether you support the council or not, why and why not? Kelly Adi, let's start with you on that. What do you think of the Children's Council?
I absolutely do support it. I was part of the group in 2007 that tried to get it going way back when, and we just didn't have the ability to move it as a nonprofit sector. I was really pleased that this time it started as a grassroots movement and that it started from the business community, which I think is incredible. We absolutely have to have it because what we're talking about are children living in poverty a mile from where the Leon County Commission meets and a mile from the capital of one of the largest states in the nation, where children are often piled 10 and 11 into two-bedroom houses while their parents are trying to figure out how to support them. The only way that we're, it's all attached. The poverty is attached, crime rate is attached, and the fact that children are living under dire circumstances is all attached. And so what we have to do is as early intervention as we possibly can with the children. And that's even recognized by the Florida Chamber of Commerce as one of the best steps to take with children. We have to have more prevention and intervention programs that can really work with children zero to five and above, but zero to five in particular, to help them see that there are alternatives to intergenerational poverty and that there is a way for them, a trajectory away from the criminal system and into sort of whatever they want the world to be, which I really think is what we all expect for our children. The Children's Services Council is a local tax, which is also something people really need to think about. It's not money that we bring in and then send out. It's money that will stay right here to provide the services. They did a great job of putting that council together, looking at the needs in the community, trying to make decisions as best they could about the priorities because even though they can't decide it for, at this point before the referendums even passed, they had some really good ideas. But I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, again, your thoughts on the Children's Council proposal?
Yes, sir, thank you. I support the Children's Council proposal that will be on the ballot in November. I went further and actually read the statute that allows Leon County to place it on the referendum. And I looked at the other requirements as far as the studies that go into supporting it being on the ballot. And I also looked at what the ultimate results would be and how that would affect our children here in Leon County. I feel good about the makeup. If it passes, I feel good about the makeup of the council, which would include our superintendent of schools, clearly, include someone from the Department of Children and Families. It would include one of our local circuit judges, someone from the Leon County Commission, and four individuals appointed by the governor as well, just to name a few. But I'm certain that those individuals would have our children at heart. They would be able to, in my opinion, have some processes and procedures and rules to determine where those funds should go to best help our children. One of the things that impressed me about the legislation is that it does not allow subplantation. So whatever is being provided locally by our Leon County School Board will continue to be provided. This will be a supplement and it will target, of course, they indicated three target areas, but one of the areas that I'm very concerned about and impressed about is our children going to school from first through third grade, which the studies indicate that by third grade, if you tested children and looked at the statistics, you can pretty much determine the success or achievement that child will enjoy in life. So I believe giving our children an early start is a benefit. It's just, it's an investment in our children. And even though it requires levying some taxes, if it passes, I believe that tax is a good investment in our children and it will go a long ways in making sure that they are successful in life.
Thank you. We wind up our Children's Council analysis with Melissa Villar. What do you think?
Okay, I'd like to say why I do support the Children's Services Council. You know, the, because again, you know, you're going to tax the Leon County residents and the Children's Services Council will then dole out the funds to the nonprofits. And this will enable additional nonprofits to grow that are focused not only on the current, you know, the current list of nonprofits that we have here locally, but also on, you know, growing for individuals that not, don't necessarily want to be connected to faith-based organizations or to, it's an opportunity to grow for family planning, for, you know, child learning, for LGBTQ, for, you know, this is an opportunity to really, instead of the current, because some of the opponents have said, why don't we umbrella under the community-based care? Well, the community-based care funding is based on the fact that you entered the Department of Children and Families Services or the DJJ Services. And that's what we want to avoid. We want to avoid our families having to go through the court system and having issues. So we want to impact, positively impact our families early. You know, and this is what needs to be stressed about the Children's Services Council, even though there are only a few counties in, you know, less than, less than 10 in the entire state. This is what needs to be focused on, is the fact that it's an opportunity to grow our nonprofits, to grow the diversification of the nonprofits, to impact our children early. So families are not having to go through the community-based care organizations and be negatively impacted by the court system. So this is something that we're, it's, you know, to positively impact families early and to offer opportunities for nonprofits to grow and diversify here in Leon County. Thank you.
We only have a few more minutes left, folks, but one thing I wanted to address because I have seen so much activity relative to this topic on social media, particularly over the past 72 hours, people remarking that in all of their life in our area, they have never seen the tone of civil or civic discourse fall to the level that it is right now. And I don't want to name-check anyone here unless any of you want to bring it up. But as a Leon County Commissioner, what do you think you could do personally to maybe turn this situation around where we have people of disparate political or other views actually being able to maybe speak to each other once again without shrieking or throwing things? Melissa, as long as we're in your neighborhood, what do you do? How do you turn that around?
Well, I think it's very important to understand. So some of my colleagues that I work with are from the Caribbean and the hemp world, and they've never experienced systemic racism until they moved here. And, you know, and, you know, being called names, racial slurs, as my children had to endure, unfortunately, all the way through high school. And it's, unfortunately, systemic racism exists. Unfortunately, we are in a county, in a state, in a state that was segregated that had, you know, Jim Crow laws and until civil rights movement. So, but fortunately, we have leaders that are willing to work and come to the table and be together and to, and if that means that we need to protect First Amendment rights, to have an ordinance that allows for peacefully, you know, peacefully assembles, peacefully assembling, then that's what is necessary. If we need to understand, I also want to explain too, one of the, you know, when you're, the law enforcement agencies are pulling funds federally and, you know, like, like the executive order that was put out, you know, the Drug Enforcement Administration, because marijuana is being legalized across the nation, are pivoting their role. So the executive order by the White House would put out to survey, you know, DEA now has surveillance over protesters authority. And so these are, these are issues that are real, that are happening in our area. And what we want to do is come together and we want to be able to have and understand each other on all sides because, you know, the stand-your-ground laws are an issue. And I mean, this is why I focus on legalization as well because when you legalize something, you take away the criminalization, de-schedule, it decriminalizes. And if that means that, and I'm not in any way a gun rights advocate or a second amendment, however, if you encourage people to actually go through the process and become a concealed carry permit, then you take away that felony from them. You know, these are, these are real, this is about education. This is about, you know, bringing people to the table and understanding your rights and responsibilities as a, as a resident, as a Leon County voter on all sides. You know, we have a responsibility to our community for public safety. Public safety is my number one concern, which is why Leon County is, no longer has the highest crime rate in the state because that's what has always been important to me. Because growing up in Texas, you have, you know, cartels were prevalent. And so, and, you know, they would use mules, our children as mules. So two pounds is a misdemeanor. Carrying two pounds of cannabis is a misdemeanor. So public safety has always been my number one concern. And the less we criminalize our community, the safer it will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly Adi, I saw your smile there. You've had some, shall we say, firsthand experience here. How do you, after we address this?
So I think I found my line. So I, a few weeks ago, said something on Facebook that got blown up as a headline on a website, and I had hundreds of people calling me names and yelling at me on certain Facebook sites. And I, that didn't bother me so much. Some of it was just stupid and silly and didn't make any sense, some of the arguments they were making. But they were arguing against something that I had said. So I think that was a good lesson in what happens when you're, when people are hearing what you have to say. But what happened this last week where somebody went online and posted about the appearances of one of the, one of my opponents and I, and which one of us was prettier and who should win, that was a line for me because that was just blatant sexism. That was something that I have definitely figured out is a line. I feel the same way about racism. I will tolerate people being angry, thinking that I'm not the right person for something or that I made the wrong decision and that they say it heatedly and passionately as long as I'm not being cursed at and screened at. But I will not tolerate when people are literally hurting someone because of our gender or because of our race or sexual orientation or abilities. So I found my line. So I think in that sense, that was a really good thing. I was super pleased at the number of people that have spoken up against what was said. I was very disappointed that neither one of my opponents did, but I was very grateful for the people in the community. There have been hundreds of them that have spoken up against what was said. So I'm grateful for that. I think that there is something really wrong at a national level that has prompted all of us to believe that we can act with hostility and not civility towards each other. And I will do everything I can to model the way that it should be done, to be respectful, to see the good in people and still disagree with what they have to say. I think one of the things that I have been good at for 25 years is standing up for what I believe in a very strong and fierce way, but that, but by not painting people with a large brush that they no longer are good or honorable people in some other way. But I found my line thanks to the campaign and I will work to model and promote civility.
Thank you, ma'am. Carolyn Cummings, your thoughts on this, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I'm trying to reset my stopwatch here so I won't go over. Okay, thank you for that question. We have certainly witnessed here the last few months a heightened polarization within the country and right here in Leon County. The Black Lives Matter movement is a peaceful movement of individuals who are protesting against social justice. And many of us have taken part in peaceful marches in favor of equality for everyone. So I certainly advocate and appall for citizens to be able to engage in peaceful protest. I do not support, I do not advocate rioting activities. And I think for the most part, what we've seen is outside agitators coming into some of the peaceful marches that we have observed across the country, maybe even here in Leon County. But I also believe in the First Amendment right of individuals to engage in peaceful protest against injustice. And I'm concerned that that ability to do that might be adversely affected or have a chilling effect on individuals expressing and exercising their First Amendment right to assemble. I am also concerned, on the other hand, about law enforcement, enforcing laws. I'm concerned about maintaining peace, maintaining harmony here in Leon County. And so as a Leon County Commissioner, looking at the polarization that we have, I believe citizens want to express themselves. One way of expression is peaceful protest, but another way of expression is forums. Speaking, speaking in a forum with like-minded individuals, meaning interested individuals with law enforcement, with community leaders, with the faith-based community, with everybody that has a stake in the outcome of Leon County being a peaceful place to live and grow should be at the table. And I agree with you, we are hurting, we are suffering, and we don't want more polarization. We do not need more division in Leon County. So we need to come together and address the issue. And I just firmly believe people want to voice their opinion. People want to be heard. And at the end of the day, if people are heard and their opinions are voiced, I believe that we can move forward with some positive, concrete action so that we can end this divide, whether it's racial divide, community divide. A recent survey showed that the majority of people in Leon County, black and white, across socioeconomic lines, believe that there is inequity here in Leon County. So we at a pivotal point where we can address it. We do not need to allow this moment to escape us. We are in a defining moment. And as a Leon County Commissioner, I would advocate for us to please come- And as a Leon County Commissioner, I would advocate for us to please come together and let's breathe and let's enjoy peace and harmony by talking to each other, not at each other. Thank you.
Final question, lightning round, 30 seconds. Carolyn Cummings, you get elected, you sit at your desk up there on the fifth floor of the courthouse. What is the first thing that you will do? Go.
The first thing that I will do is I will incorporate one day a week to speak to citizens. I want to hear from the citizen. As county commissioner, we represent the citizens and I've got to know the citizens' insight. So one day a week, my administrative assistant will set aside time for me to talk to individuals. If we're still enduring the pandemic, we will do it virtually. But I will talk to everybody. It doesn't matter what zip code you're from, I want to be accessible to the citizen.
Thank you. Kelly Adi, same question. Go.
The first thing I'm going to do is hold the first of the listening sessions that I'll be doing quarterly. I'm going to hold one listening session in every one of the six districts every quarter. So I want to do that right away and get a list of priorities from each district's citizens.
Thank you very much. And you get the last word, Melissa Villar.
Yes, in order to, we need to have forums, we need to have discussions because we need to set our legislative and local priorities. One of the things that I, it's not only about our natural resources and our responsible and sustainable growth management and development, but it's also about, like, for instance, our, our health insurance premiums. When I worked at the legislature, I brought it to the attention of my staff saying, why, why aren't we pushing for fixed rates on our health insurance premiums? Because then it would blow up like the airline industry and it would be just a mess. And it did. So our priorities, the meeting forums were our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melissa Villar. Kelly Adi and Carolyn Cummings, the three contenders for Leon County Board of County Commissioners, the at-large seat one. Good luck to you all. Thank you for being on Political Perspectives and we'll probably be talking to you election night. Thanks for being a part of it.
Thank you. Enjoy it.
Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. Taylor Cox, Paul Damp, Amy Diaz, DeViegas, Tricia Moynihan, and Lydell Rawls, along with our Director of Content, Kim Kelly, putting all of this together. We thank you so much. I'm Tom Flanagan. Our next Political Perspectives on Tuesday, September 29th, will focus on the Leon County Commission District Four Contest. We invite you to join us then for another Political Perspectives from WFSU Public Media. Take care.